First item on the agenda is the agenda approval. Counselor V. Hill.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Holly.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. This is the section of the agenda. We have the citizen comments. This is where we ask any citizens who would like to make any comments to come up to the podium, and you can make your comment if you don't mind stating your name. We do ask that your comments are limited to three minutes. There is a clock right there that a timer will start, and I will ask you to end your talking if you're still talking within that three-minute time period. So at this time, I would like to open it up for the citizen comments. Please feel free, any citizens, to come up to the podium and make your comments. We have Connie Martin first. And I know Lyle has one too. So I didn't get...I tell you what, I don't know if everyone knows about these comment cards, so if you want to come up to the podium, just if you could, just let Holly know, and then I'll make sure that I have you come up. Okay, Ms. Connie Martin.
Yeah. Merry Christmas, and that's what I get for kind of walking in late, is I have to go first. Connie Martin, 712 Cottonwood Circle here in Alamosa, and good evening. I'm Connie Martin, the CEO of San Luis Valley Health, and I'm here to express my support for the transition of the golf course to the city of Alamosa. I'm not a golfer, and even in my own family, would probably finish last in a game of putt-putt. However, I believe the golf course is a city treasure. During my tenure as CEO, I've seen a steady increase in the interest of our workforce in places of recreation near their place of work. We have worked diligently to recruit and retain professional workforce in delivering the healthcare to our community. We recruit and hire doctors, nurse practitioners, administrative leaders, physical therapists, pharmacists, et cetera, and our recruiting pool is really the national stage. When we recruit these professionals, we're competing with communities from across the country. To be successful in this process, we need to not only sell our organization, but we need to sell the valley, and we need to sell our city. And as we study what the workforce of today is seeking in a place to call home, the feedback given to us continually is work-life balance. That access to passions that are beyond their job must be available easily and reasonable in cost. For us, we're looking for candidates who love the outdoors, small town, community medicine. In addition, the talent we hire tells us that trails, water, the mountains, parks, golf, recreation make a difference in where they choose for their jobs and where they choose to live. We have a significant number of staff who utilize the golf course today and want to see it remain a high-quality, reasonable-cost recreational opportunity. I also want to just say on a personal note, I live near the golf course, and even though I don't play, I appreciate the aesthetics that it brings to the community and the treasure that it is for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, up next, we have Lyle Hood.
Okay, that's a little better. Thank you, councilors. My name's Lyle Hood. I'm a CPA. I was on the golf board for 11 years, and in fact, my firm did the accounting for the golf board and the financials for every year until 2019, when the city graciously took over, and from what I understand, it done an outstanding job, and it's been a real benefit there. I have to tell you, I'm thrilled with the prospect of the city taking over the golf course. Very few municipal courses can survive without significant support from the city that they're associated with. Unfortunately, the course and the board, the golf board which runs the golf course for the city, the city owns the golf course and the building, kind of ran into a perfect storm beginning in 2014. First of all, we lost our restaurant tenant, and that created a kind of a downward spiral where we went through multiple failed efforts at the restaurant out there. It cost significant sums for the golf board. They endured that, and one quite ill-fated effort where the golf board itself tried to run the restaurant, and that was a bad mistake, and again, further dug the hole. Then unfortunately, in 2018, we had this significant drought that really impacted the golf course and the play, and then, as everybody is still in very recent memory, familiar with the flood of 2019, actually not a flood, it was subwater, that pretty much made the course unplayable for much of the year, which the combination of all of those things just ended up digging a financial hole that the golf board could not possibly ever dig out of as a municipal course, just don't have the ability to charge the fees necessary to dig out of that kind of a hole. Anyway, in that I was involved in the financial operations, or not operations, but preparation of the financial statements, I went back for the last several years and reviewed the financial records from 2009 to 2014, when this tsunami started. And in fact, if you just isolate the golf boards, eliminate the restaurant operations and the peripheral expenses associated therewith, the golf operations actually made or profited over $150,000. So for municipal course, for the golf course to do that well over a five-, six-year period, it's really pretty outstanding. So I think the golf course can stand alone if it's allowed to, but like I say, these other factors kind of came in and just created a hole we could not dig out of. Anyway, we have an incredible pro in John Attencio, we have an incredible superintendent right here in Britt Jordan. The course is poised for wonderful things. I truly think that the Alamos Municipal Golf Course is the crown jewel of the city parks of Alamosa, and it's a resource and an asset that we really need to invest in and take care of. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, right on time. All right, Heather, Eric, any follow-up to the comments?
No, we'll go into more of the history and justification. We have several agenda items, but it's great to see the community members here tonight and provide some support for what we've been hearing from the community.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So we'll move forward to ceremonial items. Heather, well, it looks like it's going to be Harry. Come on up, Harry. The introduction to our new building official.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. Certainly excited to introduce Steve Copley, our new building official. A little background on Steve. Steve's a valley native, attending Sangre Cristal School District. After graduation, Steve enlisted in the U.S. military, where he proudly served four years in the Marine Corps. After his military service, Steve returned back to Alamosa, where he joined his father and his brother in family business, Copley Construction. Steve has spent the last 20 years in the construction industry. Just recently, he was the county, Alamoso County Plan Reviewer and Commercial Building Inspector. So he not only brings all the certifications needed to fill the position, commercial, residential, and mechanical, but he also brings 20 years of experience. So certainly lucky to have Steve join the Public Works team. Small piece to the puzzle, as we're starting to get fully staffed, but certainly going to be a great asset to the city.
Steve? Is this one? Is this one? Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and this town has been really good to us as we were business endeavors over 20-plus years, and so I appreciate the opportunity to serve in this capacity. Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Hensley.
Well, Steve, I want to welcome you. I know what you bring is that you bring a lot of true values. You're very...I know you have very strong ethics, and I know you're known for that in the community, and so I know the city is very proud to have you on board. I'm looking forward to having you and what you do, you'll bring to our city and the whole group, so thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Steve, I got a chance to meet you for the first time today, and I can tell you that you did leave a positive lasting impression, so I wish you much success, my friend.
Good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, and welcome to the team.
Thanks.
Andy, up next on the agenda, we have the 219 Eagle Scout project.
Mayor, council, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm excited to introduce you to some young men out here who did some great things for our community. So every year, we're usually the recipient of one or two community service Eagle Scout candidate projects. This year, I'm going to tell you about four of them, and not only is it, you know, the total number was good, but these projects deserve special merit in my eyes. The kids were outstanding, and the follow-through, and the things they do for our community, and our Parks and Rec Department are just outstanding. So I'm excited to bring them up here today. First, let me introduce them. Come on up, guys. All right, so we have Ben Jackson, Evan Sowards, and Brendan Crowder. First, I'm going to talk about someone who's not here, Logan Smith. And I worked a little closer with these guys and was familiar with their projects. Well, Logan did a project at the cemetery, and that was putting some landscape fabric down and some mulch on our new entryway trees, and that's a big deal. Trees in Alamosa are a big deal. And so, you know, as we improve the aesthetics in the entryway to the cemetery, we already had a solid drip irrigation system, but he's going to ensure the health of those trees with that project. So Jeremy, the Parks took care a little more of that one, but I wanted to mention that project as well. All right, I have a lot to talk about here because these guys did so much. I think I will start with Evan. Evan's project was with the multi-use pavilion and ice rink, and he had a professional sound system installed and hung professional quality, something you'd see at a university or professional arena, flags in our building by the scoreboard there. And being an industrial-style building, it really improved the aesthetics, and I can't even tell you about the sound system, how nice it is. I mean, it's nicer than most gyms. It's just added an air of, not only during competitions where you could have music, but just during public skate, just that nice aura that music brings. So Evan, outstanding job. I mean, what a project. It was great. All right, next, Brendan. Brendan did a bike repair station at Carroll Park, and here's a picture of what they did. This is a bike stand. It holds your bike. It has tools tethered to it. There's even a pump on there, right, Brendan? Yeah, and this, what's cool about this project, other than helping people get around the city, is that it's part of Revitalize the Rios overall program of installing these. Now we have one at the Disc Golf Course, at Cole Park, at Carroll. You can pretty much make your way around the city now and know that you're near one of these repair stations. A lot of initiative, came up with really doing this after, you know, we told them what's going on in the city, and I didn't even do a whole lot with this, so, you know, tremendous job. All right, finally, I want to tell you a little bit about Ben's project. Ben replaced all 17 benches in Cole Park, and I'm embarrassed to tell you, I didn't know there was 17 benches. What a project, and it was a lot of work. It wasn't just putting Trex material, which is more durable and looks better, and you can see he had Alamosa engraved with the family business, which is woodworking, but he had to redo all the brackets that mounted these benches, so there was metal fabrication of a professional quality. And if we ever get in trouble and have to replace boards, it'll be easier now. These benches are used by the entire community, whether you're a soccer dad there, or you're walking your dog. It doesn't matter who you are. You wouldn't believe how much those benches get used. So I'm very happy these guys showed up tonight, and it makes me proud to have worked with them, and proud to be in Alamosa, that these are kind of the projects that improve our public spaces. So maybe these, you guys have a few words for these young gentlemen?
Yes, we do. We do. Sure do. Counselor Brawls, please.
Well, I want to say on behalf of the city, we greatly appreciate what you've done. That's great leadership. And I too am an Eagle Scout, and I know what it takes to do an Eagle project. So I know it took a lot of work, dedication, and great leadership, because you have to manage it and find the funds, put the project together with the other Scouts, and I say that's an outstanding achievement, and it shows your potential leadership. So congratulations, and thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Brawls. Counselor V. Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Ben, Evan, Brendan, and Logan, thank you very much for doing this for our town. I'm really happy that you touched different parts of town, the multipurpose pavilion, the Carroll Park, the cemetery, and Cole Park. We got a little bit of it all. It's just really awesome. I was a Boy Scout too, I never got, as far as you all did. It's such an honor to be an Eagle Scout, and it's just great to have you all as an asset to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor V. Hill. Counselor Daniel, then Counselor Carson.
Thank you, Mayor. So men, I just want to say thank you so much for this. This was, and these are amazing projects for our community, and the thing that I think I'm most excited about is what you're doing for other young people. So you guys are almost fully grown, you've done all of this work, all of these things. You're going to be great leaders in our community, our great leaders, not going to be. You're our great leaders in our community, and you are showing other people who are looking up to you, the kinds of things we can do in Alamosa, and the kinds of things they can do. So thank you so much for that. Thank you for the work you put in. You're making our city great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Carson, and then Counselor Hensley.
The drive that projects like this show is pretty amazing, and the example that you guys are setting for the other kids in the community is awesome, and I'm very proud of you guys, and I'm sure all your family is, and the entire community. Thank you. Those are some awesome things you guys do. Appreciate you very much.
Okay, Counselor Hensley, and then Counselor Grego.
The hard part, when you're one of the last ones to say something, everybody's already said it. So I'm going to echo what all of my colleagues have said, but I think it is fantastic. It is neat also to see from your eyes, each of you, that things that you see as a need in our community, which are true needs, when I'm seeing all of these different things, and again, how it's in different sort of aspects of our city. It is fantastic. And again, that idea of you setting and being a role model for those behind you is fantastic. So thank you so much for what you've done.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor Grego.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I too want to thank you guys. I was born and raised here, and to see young people like yourselves caring about our community and putting all this hard work, it should reflect to everybody else, and I hope everybody sees this, and it gets out there like wildfire. So thank you very much for caring for our community and our city, so thank you.
Okay, and I too would like to just sum it up and let you all know that you're doing amazing work, and I believe everyone in the community will benefit from these projects. Evan, Evan, the sound system, trust me, I played pickleball over there, that sound system is amazing, and thank you for doing that. That's an amazing project. You did a wonderful job. Brendan, the bike repair station, there are so many people who ride bikes in our community, and that is such a great need. I haven't utilized that yet, but I'm quite sure I will this summer. And Ben, the benches, I have utilized the benches. Thank you so very much for doing that. And 17 of them, that's a lot of work and a lot of commitment to it, so you all have done a lot of things, and to you, it may seem like they're little things, but they're little things that make a big difference in our community. So continue to do the great work that you're doing, and I wish you the best. Thank you.
I actually have one more thing to add, and that is the entire troop. And Evan led a group that helped plant the trees in the parking lot the year before as part of our CTC Annual Tree Planting Project, so a gift that keeps on giving, and these guys are great. So thanks again, council.
Thank you. Thank you all. Good job. Okay, up next, we have Consent Calendar A.
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, please start voting, please. Ms. Holly.
The motion carried unanimously.
All right. Good job. Okay, up next on the agenda, we have Regular Business. Business brought forward by city staff. The first item is Public Works, a public hearing on Resolution Number 25-2019.
Submitting Resolution Number 25-2019, finding the eligibility for annexation of the annexation of the McLean-Fink subdivision, lots 66 and 67. Steph has reviewed and determined the requirements for the contingency practability for services and land ownership have been met, and recommends that council conducts a public hearing. And unless evidence to the contrary is introduced, adopt Resolution 20-2019, and move forward with the public hearing.
Okay, so at this time, I would like to open it up for a public hearing on Resolution 25-2019. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments, now is the time to come to the podium and make your comments in regards to this resolution. Okay, seeing that there's no one in the audience, at this time, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Counselor Grego.
With that, Mayor, I'll make the motion, we approve Resolution Number 25-219.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, it is. It's all adjacent to the available lots, correct?
Okay. No further discussion? Please start voting. Ms. Holly.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. The next item is under Finance, a motion authorizing the Finance Director.
Thank you, Mayor. The item before you tonight has a lot of words to really say something that's somewhat much more simple, but we needed to write this as a formal document, so if we look back at it years from now. You might recall when council sat down to look at the debt that we would need to issue for the water augmentation plan, there's a lot of things you guys talked about, and one of those things is if there were extra funds remaining after the water augmentation needs, you didn't want it just to be open-ended on what those funds could be used for, and so you set very specific categories, such as the levee, water lines, lift stations, that the funds could be used for, but obviously, the primary focus is on the water augmentation. And as we started down that path, the requirement for the debt required that 85% of those funds be spent within three years, and we didn't think that that was going to be hard to meet. But several of our contracts for the water rights are pending an outcome in court, and we're also waiting a little bit on the storage and some engineering and legal costs. So we are not close to spending that 85%, and so that expires, or that clock comes due April of 2020. And unfortunately, we can't do lift stations during the winter, we can't do the water lines during the wintertime. So what we want to do is to relieve that pressure of that 85% being spent by April of 2020. So if we look back at our projects in 2017 and 2018, that would be eligible to have been using this funding. There's about $960,000 if we take a look. And so what the request is, is we didn't want to just move the numbers in a spreadsheet because we've already closed out these audits for those years. We wanted official council action that would allow us to take that 960 and say that the water augmentation funding paid for it, and the funds, then that that frees up in the enterprise, we earmark that back for those projects that are still remaining. So really, this is just to relieve us from that three-year timeframe, but it's all legitimate projects, and it's all consistent with the language that council had set out.
Counselor V. Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. So just a clarifying question, Heather, where it says eligible projects in the council communication, 12th Street, 1st Street, 1st Street, 2nd, and 12th, those were things that we had planned to do back in 17 and 18?
Yes, and they're projects we already did.
Oh.
Yeah, they're done.
Okay.
Yeah, they're completed, but we paid from them through the enterprise fund, but we just want to relieve ourselves on that, needing to spend the money by April 20th, or 2020.
Thank you, Counselor V. Hill. Okay, Counselor Grego.
Well, if there's no further questions, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we authorize the Finance Director to categorize certain 2017 and 2018 qualified projects.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, please start voting. Okay, Ms. Holly.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. The next item is 2B, Resolution Number 24-2019.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
This is the third budget amendment, and the last one for 2019. It includes several items that will help our budget in a lot of ways. On the first, I'm just going to go down the list. If you have questions, please stop me, or however you want to do it. The interest on our investments, the interest rate stayed fairly stable for most of the year, so we were able to achieve a lot higher interest than we thought we were going to get when we did the budget, and so we went ahead and included that in this budget amendment. The PD Training Foundation is a...the PD does a lot of work for this foundation, and then the foundation reimburses them, and they use the training center that's over just next to Cole Park. It's a way that benefits all the...well, they have police officers that come from all over the valley, and I know I've seen cars from Gunnison and Durango, so they bring people into town for the foundation, so it does a little more than just help our officers. I think Heather applied for this grant. It's for the Water Smarts, and they...it's from the Colorado Water Conservation Board, and the actual total of the grant was $58,500, but because not all of the projects were finished, they withheld part of it, so that, and then we'll roll that out to 2020. The $59.95 is a recovery, an insurance recovery for the gator that was stolen from Parks Department. The Dole Mini Grant was for the facade program. The $25,000 is some years back when they built the intersection at Craft and 160. There was an agreement that part of those property owners that benefited from that intersection would repay the city, and somehow that fell through the cracks, but I think Eric is the one who discovered that they should have been paying back the city for that, so they contacted the property owners, and so they've been agreed to a three-year contract to pay the amounts that they owe. That reimbursement of expenditures, SLB Health did some remodeling and expansion, and they had plan reviews that were more complicated than our planning department was able to do, so we have to farm those out, and then we build the hospital. You'll see the expense down below, but this is where the hospital reimburses for that plan review. The $8,043 is the money that was left in the capital projects for the golf course watering system construction, and it's been in there for several months, and there hasn't been any additional expenses, so I moved it back to the...I'd like to move it back to the general fund. The transfer-in is on this 2010 COP, which is for this building and public safety. When they did those COPs, they put about, I think it's about $480,000 in a trust fund, it was enough to make one payment in case something happened that the city didn't have the funds on hand, but we didn't use those, and since we did the COP refinancing, we were able to transfer that money back, and then we'll use it to pay down the COP and the refinancing, which is the next line. And even though that says that it's revenue to us, we'll never see it, it's just going to go in and go back out to purchase the new COPs. On the expense for the general... On the expense for the general fund, the admin, public relations, council agreed to... That was for the advertising for the streets tax project. That Kelly did a lot of work on. That's for the signs and other advertising. Bond principles and interest. In doing the bond refinancing, we do have a bond payment for this building that comes due in February. But in order to facilitate the financing, we have to pay that now. And then that's all included in that bond refinancing. It's money that was budgeted in twenty twenty, so we just have to move it up a couple of months. The land acquisition is the, I think it's eleven or twelve acres that the city will purchase from the McCarty's. It's out by the... Where the head gate is, where the independent ditch comes in. It needs to have some work done. And this way, if we own the land, we can do the work necessary for the ranch. The facade program, it's the expenditures. Since Kathy's been on board, she's been able to encourage several business owners to take advantage of this facade program. So we didn't want to say no. And so council agreed to let us fund a few more of those projects. The Training Foundation is just the expense side of the revenue from up above. Same with plan review. Heather was contacted by Excel and they realized that when they did the street lighting estimate, that they had missed a couple of sections of town. And so they wanted to know if we could... If we wanted to go ahead and finish that project this year. And council agreed to have them do that. We had eleven thousand dollars left in the budget, in the nineteen budget. And so the sixty-two six twenty reflects the additional amount we need to finish the project. We did have twenty twenty... Excuse me, forty thousand budgeted in twenty twenty. So we'll use that money, so we won't have to spend it in twenty twenty. And then the rest is from that additional interest that we received. The parks... The cemetery needed a new mower. Actually, they really had to have a new mower because theirs just gave out on them. So the department had realized savings from... They had planned to purchase software, cemetery software. And Deacon was able to magically... He's a pretty smart guy. He was able to just... He figured out how to do it on his own and he created one, so it didn't cost the city any additional money. And so we use... We'll use part of that money. And then because the cemetery department uses it and the Parks Department will use it sometimes if they need it, they agreed to transfer a couple thousand dollars each to that cemetery endowment fund to purchase that mower. The bond principal and interest is part of that refinancing, so that's just on paper, basically. Operating machines and equipment is twelve thousand dollars for the gator that was stolen. And part of that is the six thousand about dollars that we got from the insurance company and the rest would come from that additional interest. And then on the next page, the landscaping and beautification is part of the Water Smarts here at City Hall and out by the airport. And there's been a lot of really nice projects so far. Then we'll move on to the enterprise fund lease proceeds. Same, part of that debt refinancing was in the general fund and part of it was in the enterprise fund, the augmentation plan. And if you recall now, the... Now, on the twenty-sixth of December, when this is complete, the ranch, Alamosa Ranch will be completely unencumbered, so that'll be nice. Same expense, same thing. The membranes for the wastewater treatment plant, this was an earlier budget amendment. But when I did it, I put it in the Water Department and it should have been in the Water Treatment Department. So I'm just... I just like to reclass that down to membranes, water treatment plant. And then we did actually receive the invoice that I'll be paying next week. And that's the total for... That includes the shipping and everything. But we just had an estimate before. The augmentation plan, we've had some additional expenses and most of those are for engineering costs. And the cemetery endowment, the endowment received a five thousand dollar generous donation from the Carl Zeets Trust. And part of that is what we're going to use to purchase that mower. And then the four thousand dollars is the transfers in from the cemetery and Parks Department. And then there's the mower that we're going to buy, it's next. Community recreation, Friends of the Library donated five thousand dollars. And then they... Recreation received a nine thousand, one thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars from SLB Grade Outdoors for a mini-grant to help pay for an intern. The expenses is the five thousand dollars that Saleh will use to buy things for the library. The solar field maintenance is the new solar field we bought. It's... This takes some maintenance, we cutting, things like that, that we didn't include in the budget.
One question over there.
Uh-huh.
I wasn't clear on how much exactly we spent on the lawnmower.
On the lawnmower?
Just for clarity.
One fourteen thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Was the fourteen plus the nine?
No, the nine was the... No, no, the nine... The nine is revenue. The five thousand dollars was donated by Mr. Zeets' trust. And then we transferred in four thousand, two thousand from Parks and two thousand from cemeteries. And then the balance will be paid from the savings from the cemetery software that Deacon made instead of having to purchase it. It was like... And it was expensive. It was about fifteen thousand dollars. But Deacon was able to create some kind...
Fifteen grand for the software covers the fourteen eight eighty?
Actually about...
More or less?
Well, no, no, the... I guess it would, but we also have five thousand and four thousand that we were going to use. So the difference between the nine thousand and the fourteen eight eighty was come from cemetery endowment.
Okay, so it's going to be like six grand?
Uh-huh, yes.
That's what I was wondering.
Yes, yeah. Let's see. To the library. In the capital projects funds, that's just... That's the money that would be transferred back to the general fund from that golf course watering system. And I noticed when I did this, this last one says Capital Reserve Fund, but it should actually say A C L C Debt Reserve. And I thank goodness it's right on the ordinance or on the resolution. It's got the correct verbiage. But it should say A C L C Debt Reserve. And that's the money that's going into the general fund, so to pay for that COP refinancing. Does anyone have any questions?
Any other questions, council? Okay. Counselor Daniel?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Judy, I just want to say, first of all, thank you for wearing your festive sweater. So appreciate the effort. And then really, I think what you have done with our budget and making it clear and easy for us to understand and really like sharing with us the changes, the reclassifications, the debt refinancing, I know that was incredibly difficult work. So I just want to say thank you. This is amazing. I really feel like we understand what happens. I know we approve these throughout the year, but I think you really pulling it together for these types of... This type of information is really, really helpful. So thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Counselor Gregel?
There's no further questions. I'll make the motion that we pass Resolution Number twenty-four dash two thousand nineteen.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Think we might be missing one. All right, thank you.
The motion carried unanimously.
All right, great. Up next, under Item Two C, Resolution Number twenty-seven dash twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Mayor. So since I've been doing this, this is the first time I can remember doing a budget adjustment before we actually enter the budget year. So it's a little out of the ordinary. But it's something to where the significance of what we're doing, we wanted to make sure we had a council vote on that. And that is taking on the operations of the golf course and modifying that partnership. And so it's a significant budget in regards to both the operations and then the debt. But if this is going to be effective January first, we're going to be spending money. And so we just want to make sure everything's in line. We did hold a work session where we reviewed this information, but just to kind of do a quick overview, we do... We did create a golf division that is within the recreation fund. And so that's not in the general fund, it's in the recreation fund. And we've... Judy and Andy worked with the golf staff to take a look at what we think the revenue will be, what we think the expenses will be. We added some of the expenses that didn't exist, such as the healthcare, retirement, some of those things. And we took out some of the expenses that won't be there since it's going to be underneath the city. So we really tried to get it as close to what we think it actually will be. We think the anticipated revenue will be about four hundred and eighty thousand. And the anticipated expenses will be about five hundred and ninety-two thousand. There is a detailed budget attached to the agenda. Now, clearly, there's more expenses than the revenue, but I think, as you know by now, we always do it conservatively. And so if you look at the history of the golf course with relation to the operations and expenses on just the golf side, if they can get a good year, they can have revenue that exceeds those expenses. And so that's what we're hoping for, but we always budget conservatively. And so that's why you see those numbers. There's also some debt that the city will be absorbing as well. We've always had the clubhouse debt and the agreement was the city was paying half of it and the golf course was paying... Or the golf club was paying half of that. And that was coming out of those funds that are used for recreation. So we're moving that entire debt, though, to the non-departmental line item in the general fund. We're also moving an annual payment of about thirty-one thousand that's related to the debt that has been incurred by the golf course to that same line item. And then the... We haven't finished all the discussions, but should the mechanic be a mechanic when we absorb that? That would be in the fleet division. But again, there's still some discussions that we need to have on job responsibilities and where that's going to fit in. And then half of the annual payment for a five-year equipment lease, which is about thirty-five thousand, will be placed in the general fund. And so what I wanted to try to do is put as much of the operational in within the division, but the rec fund does not have enough funds to absorb all the debt. And so that's then the portion that's been put in the general fund. And a lot of those expire within, I think, five, seven, and nine years. And so it's debt that we're not going to be adding to and should be going away. And so with this budget, it just creates that division and it allocates those expenses to those different areas.
Thank you, Heather. Counselor Brawls?
What's the remaining debt on the clubhouse?
I think it's around three hundred thousand dollars, something like that.
About three hundred thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Are you going to give us an amended budget with these included in there, twenty twenty budget?
We will when we finish. We have the budget book almost done. And then we have... So we're going to have to redo parts of it.
We'll get a copy eventually, right?
Yes. Yeah, as soon as we get it finished, we'll send you an electronic copy and we'll also make you a book that has everything in it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Brawls. Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just really wanted to say thank you for putting all of this together. I know, and we'll probably talk about this more, but I really appreciate all the support we've had from the golf board in making these decisions. They've been really thankful for the changes that we're already like being able... I know the... Doing the financing was a huge deal, the financial reports and things like that. So I believe that this is a huge positive and a huge win for the city, even though this made a huge change to our budget. So thank you for that. Judy, do you see any concerns that you're worried about with this? I feel like we discussed this during the work session, but I just want to make sure.
No, because we have the support of the golf board and the golf... The members that attended the meeting were all very positive about it. And I think they'll... I think they'll really... If you get a good core group supporting it, they're going to bring everyone else on board. And I really think they were all for it. And I think they'll see that the city's going to do... Going to help them, help them, the golf to really be a good asset for the city.
I think the other is surely this luck cannot continue. And we could have one year without a flood or a drought or something. So it would be nice to have a good year. And I think with the new golf carts and the equipment, that we can maybe even start seeing some improvements that will then really connect with the membership as well.
Okay. All right, Counselor Daniel?
If there are no other questions or comments, I move that we approve Resolution Number twenty-seven twenty nineteen, amending the twenty twenty budget.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Please start voting. Thank you. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you. Okay. So we're under Item Two D, if I'm not mistaken, the first reading of ordinance number thirty-one dash twenty nineteen.
Okay, this one... Oh, you go ahead. Okay, so this goes right along with the budget amendment. So bringing on these operations requires us to modify our pay plan. As you guys know, I can't hire outside of that pay plan. So we've evaluated the different positions regarding the golf operations and placed them within the pay plan. Additionally, one that is not part of golf, so it's a little bit of a standalone, is for a while now, the library manager has indicated that maybe her job description's not a hundred percent accurate. I didn't look at it in the most timely manner. But since then, Andy has taken a look at it. And in fact, there were some major functions that were missing and we probably had it in the wrong grade. So my recommendation is to also reclassify that position from a grade ten to a grade eleven and make that where it needs to be appropriately in the pay plan.
Okay, any questions? Counselor Gregel?
With that, I'll make the motion that we pass on first reading, ordinance number thirty-one dash two nineteen. Set it for a public hearing on January, what's the second? Fifteen at seven o'clock or sooner after.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Okay, next under Item Three.
Thank you, council.
You're welcome. Thank you. Parks and Recreation. We'll wait for Andy to get up here.
So we have some more golf. So now my counterpart is Andy instead of Judy. So to provide just a little bit more background, throughout the years, there's been on and off discussions on should we modify that partnership and the city assume operations. And they've never really gone too far. But as Lyle Hood explained, the perfect storm has really prompted the golf board to take a look at this seriously. They did vote unanimously on November twenty-first in order to approach the city and officially ask the city to assume operations. And so as part of that discussion, there's a lot of items you got before you on your agenda. And some of that... This item is related to the management agreement that we have. And so it is a formal agreement. So we felt that we actually need official council action to terminate that. So that's what this question is before you tonight. But then also related to that is the creation of the Golf Board Advisory, which is the next item. But it's also something, in addition to what you've heard from the public, I want to share what Counselor Daniel alluded to as well, is when there was a membership meeting held last week, we weren't quite sure what to expect, to be honest. But Eddie did a great job of reviewing all the information and explaining what's going on and the benefits of this relationship and what it would mean to a golfer. And I think that really made a big difference. And so not only did we not hear any grumbling, but we actually heard positive comments. And so that's... That was very... It's always nice to go to a meeting and have positive comments. And so I think... I think a lot of people were seeing the need and seeing that this time had come and that kind of thing. So it was very positive, which I think will help for this transition and make it good. The other is, as Connie Martin's indicating, there is an impact from the golf course and we can't just abandon it. And so when we list these different alternatives, and Eric was sitting there pushing me to list all these different alternatives, when I don't really think there is one. But we list these different ones. And council can clearly decide they don't want to take it on. Or they could decide not to... They could decide not to take it on and provide assistance to the golf course. But the issue is, is without some sort of assistance because of the debt and the capital needs, our asset, which is... our asset, which is ours, is not going to be maintained the way it needs to be maintained. Um, and it's not going to be the recreational facility that this community would expect. And so if we want to, if we want to maintain that asset that is ours, this is to me, um, of a very good direction to head. We also included the information that when we ran, um, the impact of the golf course, now this information comes from twenty-sixteen, um, but we estimate that there's about an annual impact of seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Now, some of that, those things that go into making in that formula are going to be eliminated because we're not going to pay for outside legal or outside accounting and some of those types of things. But I also think the golf course has increased its tournaments and those types of things. So it's important when you might get questions out in the community of why are we taking this on and, and making these kinds of investments? It's, one, it's, it's always been a city asset and it's been a city asset for our residents and equality of life. And there's a sense of responsibility there and it does make a difference. And so Andy, I don't know if you want to add anything else to the contract discussion or any history?
No, I think that was good. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Grego.
Mayor, I, I just wanted to make a, a couple of comments. I want to thank the, the golf board and their staff for a lot of years, the hard work that they put in in maintaining a golf course. And we've had people come here and we've had, we've had a first-class golf course out there. And it just, as, as, uh, Lyle hit, put it, the tsunami that hit us, you know, for them to care enough and to have the city, I, I know it's hard for them to, that's been like their baby, you know, to, for them to go ahead and say, let the city help them out, it shows that they really care about the golf course and, and, and the people that play and, and that. So, thank you guys, you know, uh, for what you've done and all the past years. I know there's times that you guys have used wires and, and tape to keep stuff put together and, but you did it, you know? So thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. Counselor Vehoe?
Thank you, Mayor. I also have a couple of comments. Um, again, want to echo what Mr. Grego said about, um, the golf board. Kind of letting go a little bit and letting the city take it over. Um, I just want to make sure that we, we keep, as the city takes us over, that we keep it affordable for all. We have to keep this affordable for all. I don't want it to become a country club type. And I, I don't think any of us up here want that to happen either. So, I just want that to be said. And then another thing too is, and I know it's, it's going to be a brand-new relationship with the people who run the golf course now and the city. I just want to make sure, um, over time, that, that, that relationship, that working relationship that we have with John and, and the manager and that, um, that are, the oversight from the city and maybe Andy, because that's going to be a new thing. And I hope, I hope we work through that a little bit and, you know, I, I, I just, I just hope that, that, that's going to be rocky at first, but I hope we get that done the right way because we will be in charge out there and we know that we have high standards for things out there. And I hope that, that gets communicated. Thank you.
Counselor Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I also want to say I was overwhelmed, um, by the positive support at the meeting the other night. I was, I wasn't sure what to expect. I had shared that with Eddie. I was like, I don't need to be there if it's going to be scary. Like, we can, we can step out. Um, but no, I think people really are interested in making the golf course the best course it can be. And the people who are out there all the time also, it came up during the meeting about not being unreasonably priced and not, um, you know, changing the way things are out there. Uh, we talked a little bit about how some of the stuff in the pro shop and some things are, they are, that's personal property of people who work there because they were putting in their own time and money to help things run. Um, and with the city, we won't need to do that. Um, I think there's going to be just a ton of support for the team out there. And what I heard from the members was just really positive, really good energy. Um, and very much in support of communicating in our community that we want this to be an accessible asset. Um, I think everyone there was really on the accessibility page um, and ensuring that we can use the golf course in the winter for cross-country skiing like we do currently. I mean, no one wants to, to change or make it harder to, to golf than it is currently. Um, and so I really just appreciated the strength and the possibilities that were in that room um, and the willingness of people to really say, you know, I thought about this and I was worried at first, but I've, I've come around because I think this is the best thing for our community. And I only heard them talking about what was best for our community at that meeting and I appreciated that.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Brawls and then Counselor Hensley. And I'm sorry.
I just want to say that, uh, I'm a member out there and the cost is reasonable. I mean, you can't go to any other course and get lower prices really, unless it's a nine-hole course. So I, I think, I think the board's been doing a good job, uh, holding those prices. Also, you know, I think if the, you look at the economic impact and use the multiplier effect, I think it's pretty high. Lot, I don't, lot, lot more than seven hundred thousand to the community, so. And, and I agree, that's a big asset out there for, for our city. So, you know, I, I think there's only one way to go really and that's to move forward as proposed by staff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Brawls. Counselor Carson and then Counselor Hensley.
This, this golf course is, it's a beautiful golf course. It's phenomenal. It, you know, I've, I've golfed on many different courses and this is a standout course. Um, it, it has suffered a little bit, uh, but I think the amount of positivity that's been generated and support by, by the members, um, it's going to be a good venture. The, the people that work at the golf course now, I think, can have a little more stability as well. I think it's going to bring some of that to them and to their families and, and it's going to be a great thing because it is, it's something that we've just invested a ton of money in, you know, and, and to conserve water and, and to bring it back to life. Um, and I think this is the right direction. Uh, I appreciate everything that everybody's done that's involved. Um, and I look forward to, to new, some new grass next year and, um, thank you guys. Thank you for the support and I know it's difficult because I know the members are really vested and I know they really have an emotional tie to it. I've known many of them for years and, um, I really appreciate the way you guys are supporting this transition. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. Counselor Hensley?
So with me, um, one of the things I saw is, so echoing again, everything that you've all said and then being on the marketing board or being the representative for the city on the marketing board and, not marketing board, sorry, golf board. Um, and seeing, so each of those meetings that we'd go to, one of the things that I used to always think is we spent ninety percent of the meeting, they would be discussing how to buy certain things they needed just to run that golf course and how to make things, they would take, had little bits of money and trying to do the cash flow and trying to make things happen. And in one sense, it showed the passion and it showed their love for the golf course. Um, and everybody volunteering saying, hey, we're going to have a volunteer day to clean up this or to do that and how Britt would spend nights there playing with the raccoons. No, that's a whole other story. But play, um, doing things that needed to happen to make sure that things were getting watered properly. And all of these things to make it happen. And I used to always think that if we could have spent that time or they could have spent that time focusing in more on the tournaments and different things to actually focus in on the golf side of it, how, how much better that would be. And I know that's going to be our next thing on the agenda, but I think how exciting is that going to be? To focus in on actual golf and what we can do. And so what they can do is take their expertise and really then build and take something that we have as a strong foundation. And they just have some fantastic ideas and I think it's even going to be that much stronger. So I'm looking forward to seeing that part of it where now, um, that money side of it isn't as much as a focus is how can we grow and even better what's happening out on the golf course? So I'm very excited about that.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor, uh, Daniel?
Mayor, if, if there's no further discussion, I move that we authorize the city manager to enter into the agreement to terminate, the amended management agreement, to terminate the golf course management agreement.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Okay, I was going to make a comment, so in, in this part right here, I'll just make that comment, um, for other discussions. Uh, the golf course is a valuable asset to our community and I'm so thankful and grateful that the city staff and city council are united when it comes to protecting and ensuring that our valuable asset is successful. It's a benefi- it, we're all, we're offering benefits now to the, um, staff members who didn't have benefits in the past, which is going to be great for their family. And being at that meeting the other day, uh, with staff, uh, Heather and also, uh, Counselor Daniel, to just hear about the support that staff is offering to the golf, uh, team to help them is, uh, greatly appreciated. And, and to see so many community members who had, uh, an interest in, in the success of the golf, um, course being successful to come and voice their concerns in a positive light was very impress- impressive. And thank you all who are out there in the audience today. Um, the golf course, um, oftentimes when city council do things, lately you all, it seems like people come up and they think we have a pocket full of money and that's not always the case. And they think, some people think it's a good thing, some people think maybe we should spend money another way. But the golf course has a positive economic impact in our community. When they put on tournaments, people shop in our stores, they eat in our restaurants and they stay in our hotels. So, um, I just want you all to know that this is a great venture that we're moving forward, uh, in. And, um, I just can, hope that we're very successful as we move forward. So those were my comments. And, uh, if there's no further discussion, Heather, did you want to make any comment? I'll see you on the mic. Okay, alright, let's start voting. Thank you.
The motion carried unanimously.
Alright, great. Okay. Up next, Resolution twenty-six dash twenty-nineteen.
Andy, did you want to do this one or?
I don't mind. I don't, so, well, in conjunction with terminating the management agreement is the need to create, uh, an advisory board. And we're excited with creating the golf, Cattails Golf Advisory Board in that it will be a little bit unique. It will be member-driven, member-chosen, um, unlike the traditional council-appointed advisory board. But it'll function in advisory capacity just as the library board does, just as the community recreation board does. And that, it's, let, we all know it's an important facet of, of how we do government and operations around here. The weight of what those people say is important and having that stakeholder voice for, for, um, all the members and everyone else is an important part of the process. So this is just a resolution to create that board. They want to go from, uh, their current nine-member, uh, golf board to seven. And it's, uh, it has, it's not, there's no conflict there. Two people were ready to, to go off of the board. Um, we've done it where they will alternate, the, there'll be changeover every two years to ensure, um, uh, new voices and, and something similar we do, that we do with our boards. So, uh, does council have any questions on, on this process or Heather, do you have some to add?
And then based on your discussion at the work session, we did add the language that, um, there will be a council liaison as well.
Thank you.
Counselor Grego?
With that, uh, if there's no further questions, I'll make the motion. We pass Resolution twenty-six dash twenty-nineteen.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Um, Counselor Carson, any comments? Any, no, any further comments?
I have one.
Okay, uh, Counselor Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Um, I just wanted, so on here it says, um, council would subsec- subsequently officially appoint the member-elected representatives to the board. We did all, also discuss that if there was a concern with a member, that it wouldn't be an automatic appointment, that we could still discuss that if we had concerns about members who were elected.
So that's where sometimes the council communication doesn't use the same wording as the resolution. Um, so let me, I'm pulling up the resolution. No, 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 that's okay, because it, um, I want to make sure. Council shall approve the committee members so nominated by Cattails Golf Club, Inc. Unless it has substantial reason not to appoint one or more of such nominees, which reason shall be communicated to Cattails Golf Club, Inc. in writing. Does that answer what you're?
Yes, thank you very much. I, I really appreciate that.
Okay. So did we, what have we done so far? We motioned, we got a second? Alright, good, thank you. Having one of those almost senior moments right here. Okay, alright, we got a motion and a second. Any, uh, further discussion? Start voting, please. Thank you. Alright.
The motion carried unanimously.
Alright, thank you very much. Thank you, Andy. Thank you, Heather. Okay, up next, under City Manager Legal, first reading of ordinance number twenty-nine dash twenty-nineteen. I think that's going to come from Eric who's wearing his festive colors tonight.
This is as festive as you get.
Ah, it's pretty festive.
Counsel, this is pretty much a housekeeping, uh, matter really, to take care of the fact that at the last election, the citizens passed a citizen-initiated initiative to ban the outdoor growing of personal, um, marijuana with, and recreational and medical within the city of Alamosa. It makes sense to incorporate that prohibition into our code of ordinances and that is simply, um, what this ordinance number twenty-nine does. Creating a provision, um, in the section that deals with, uh, with marijuana growers indoors, um, to prohibit them outdoors as well.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Counselor Grego?
With that, I'll make the motion. We pass on first reading ordinance number twenty-nine dash two nineteen and set it for a public hearing on January fifteenth at seven o'clock or sooner after.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes. Um, Holly, do you by chance, or Eric, do you know by chance the, the vote, uh, numbers on that off the top of your head? And if not, could you have that for the next meeting? Please.
I can give you the numbers, just let me get them real quick.
Sorry, counsel.
No problem.
So we had, um, a total of two thousand thirteen votes. One thousand sixty-two were for the ordinance on the initiated ballot question and then nine hundred and fifty-one voted against.
Thank you.
Okay. Start voting, please. Okay, Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Next item, under four B, first reading of ordinance number thirty dash twenty-nineteen.
So this, uh, ordinance, interestingly, kind of in some ways arises out of that same circumstances, the last ordinance, in the sense that, um, as soon as that ballot initiative passed, the city fielded a few questions from people wondering whether that meant they could still grow hemp outdoors. And the answer is yes, you can. But there's very little difference between the, uh, the way a hemp plant looks and the way a hemp plant smells to the way a marijuana plant looks and a marijuana plant smells, which leads to the question, are people going to be growing marijuana and claiming that it's hemp? Um, what if people get into growing hemp and that really causes odor problems like we were concerned about with marijuana? And we did have, back when marijuana council had, had worked on the marijuana ordinance, we had provisions in that ordinance that, uh, addressed odors that might migrate off of the property and we have no similar provisions for anything else. And so what this ordinance does is kind of fill that gap. Um, and it goes beyond just, uh, marijuana or hemp odors to talk about offensive odors in general. So you could have a, a dead animal in your yard, you know, a dead skunk or something that doesn't get taken care of and it also creates odor problems. Uh, you could have, in fact, we had in municipal court, a dispute relating to someone who was doing some furniture refinishing underneath their apartment neighbor's window and that caused all kinds of disturbance. So, um, the, i- it's more broad than- So it's more broad than merely the hemp marijuana kind of question, but we don't have anything in the current code to deal with that. This ordinance defines an offensive odor as both being unreasonably noxious, unpleasant, or strong to a person of ordinary sensibilities, and it also has to continue for a period in excess of 30 minutes, and continuing off of the property owned by the person who's generating the odor. So that's sort of the way the ordinance is designed to function. Exemptions are made for temporary orders relating to rodeos, stock shows, tarring operations, and other kind of things, which we know happen and which generate, can generate strong odors, but that's just part of life. And then also does not apply in agricultural zones. Also, the ordinance specifies that in both agricultural zones and industrial zones, the threshold for what might be an offensive odor is significantly higher than what it would be in a residential zone.
Counselor Carson?
Where did this, I mean, who initiated this, first of all? How long ago did it get initiated? Because I really kinda, I hadn't seen anything about this. Personally, I think it's a huge overreach, and I don't have any, I haven't, I have, I don't have enough information to make a good conscious vote on this. But, I mean, I can see where they're tied. But you'd have to get pretty, you know, you'd have to get pretty specific, and I think personally, this, I personally would have to look at it more, because there's issues where you have huge offensive odors all over town that can't be controlled. I mean, there's issues that, you know, yeah, we deal with that all the time, and you can't really shut them down because they have an offensive odor. So I just wanna know where, when this came about, how long it's been on the radar, I guess, and I apologize for missing it, because I really did miss this completely.
Well, it hasn't been on, unless other councils have heard anything about it, it hasn't been on council's radar.
Okay, yeah, I was kinda...
Right, so the initiation, as I was talking about, came from questions that staff started getting from people about whether they could grow hemp even outdoors, even though they couldn't grow marijuana outdoors. And the concern that I had, that yeah, we can deal with marijuana odors outdoors because we had an ordinance that addressed it. Now we don't, because now we don't address growing marijuana outdoors, other than to say you can't do it. And hemp and marijuana, I haven't seen a lot of it outdoors in Colorado, but I've seen, or in Alamosa, but people are getting creative with growing that kind of stuff. So that's the concern.
And I just, so...
Small amounts of hemp are pretty much useless. I would like the chief's opinion on this.
Well, and I just wanna jump in a little bit, is while that's what prompted this thought process, in all honesty, none of the hemp or marijuana maybe needed to happen. We still don't have something in our ordinances that if there's a smell that's a nuisance, we have no way of addressing that. And so that's what the issue is. It just happened to be connected from a thought process to some of that other stuff that was going on. But you could take the marijuana out, you can take the hemp out, but you could have a dead animal in someone's backyard, or they could have rubbish in their backyard, or they could have something else that's creating a nuisance for their neighbors, and without something like this, we have no way of addressing that. And Chief, if you wanna weigh in on anything?
Yeah, I completely agree with what Heather just mentioned. I mean, obviously, the calls are rarer than we get, but we have an obligation to the community that we have to follow up on these. And currently, we don't have anything that we can do. So that's why it's being brought to your attention.
Okay, I'll say this. I see issues like this, I, it's valid, I see what you're saying is valid. But I also think that we should start looking at, if we're gonna address nuisances as this, I think we need to start looking at our right-ofways and some of the nuisances that that's causing, just in general. I mean, if this is kind, I feel it's kind of an overreach in a sense, because it's easy to generalize stuff, and this is one of those things that, unless you're pretty specific about those odors, can be used by an angry neighbor against another angry neighbor, let's put it that way. So again, I haven't read quite as much as I'd like to on it, so I just wanted to know how quickly this, or when this had come up. It's interesting.
So the other thing that I would add to that concern, because I think it's a very valid concern, because you sometimes get neighbors that do not agree, and they like to use the police to be the go-between sometimes. And so sometimes it's loud music, it's loud noises, those types of things. It could be something related to this, it could be other items, weeds, those types of things. So at all times, the officers have discretion in regards to how they're gonna handle those complaints. And so if they don't feel it's legitimate, and they feel like it's just one neighbor trying to get at another neighbor, they'll handle that appropriately. They're not forced to write a citation just because someone is complaining. They're going to use their judgment, they're gonna look at the language that Eric reviewed, and make sure that they feel like this is a legitimate type of nuisance, and not get caught up in, you know, neighbors going at each other. Am I correct in that, Chief?
You are correct.
Counselor Daniel?
Thank you. So I do remember the conversation that we had when we talked about the marijuana outdoor grows, and I thought during that time, we had talked about it does fall under our current nuisance ordinance. So now, we just, it's, no smells are listed in our nuisance ordinance, and that's why we need a whole new one?
I don't think you're recalling that conversation correctly, because we, when we wrote the...
We wrote it into the new ordinance.
We wrote it into the one that got repealed by this citizen initiative. So we had in that prior code that you could grow marijuana outdoors so long as it was an enclosed area, and so long as the odor did not migrate past your property boundary.
But it's in a separate part of the code, not in our general nuisance area. So when that part of the code went away with the election, because you just can't grow it, that's when it came to light of, well, we don't have anything related to an odor nuisance.
Okay.
It was in two different parts of the code.
So this will be in the same place that our other nuisance ordinances are? Okay, thank you.
Counsel Grego, then Counselor Carson.
Did you have a comment?
Go ahead.
Because I was gonna, I'm ready to make a motion. I'll make the motion, we pass on first reading, ordinance number 30-2019, set it for a public hearing on January 15th at 7:00 or sooner after.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Sure.
Turn your mic on if you don't mind. There you go.
Okay, so, the motion that we are voting on now, okay, the first reading, now, we're giving examples of offensive odors, but this is not binding. These are just examples of some, have you read through this?
Part of it, yes.
Okay, so, it's a question, you know, I just wanna know, because some of this is, I mean, it's specific, but are these just examples, or this is, is this what we're binding?
Those are examples. I mean, the definition of an offensive odor does not incorporate those examples. The examples indicate things that generally can be offensive odors to a person of reasonable sensibility, but the definition just says...
That's my concern here, is there's a person with personable, very reasonable allergies to perfumes, to different kinds of smells, and, you know, so it is a valid concern, but it opens up a whole can of worms that, you know...
That's why it's to persons of ordinary sensibilities. So if you're a thin-skinned person with very strong...
It's offensive, you know what I mean? And that's what I'm saying. We're getting into a place where...
Then you're not ordinary, you know?
No, you can complain, I mean, you can be offended by anything nowadays. And the thing is, if I'm offended by you calling me not ordinary, then, you know, I can be offended by your smell. And that's the thing, is...
But being offended still doesn't meet the definition.
Well, it's pretty broad.
Being offended doesn't mean you're reasonably offended. I mean, so that's, so any, yes, anyone can be offended, anyone can actually really have a thin skin, and certain things get to them. But that standard is the reasonable person.
This, it's the same standard that we have in our noise ordinance, which is, it's unreasonable noise to a person of ordinary sensibility. Now, you may be a person who hates music being played at 4:00 in the afternoon, and you call up and make a complaint to the police, they're gonna come by and say, hey, it's 4:00 in the afternoon, they're having a yard party, you know? Deal with it. A person of ordinary sensibility's not gonna have a problem with that.
And that does, that honestly does happen. I mean, police officers get calls on nuisance-related items that they sometimes tell the people, this is not a nuisance.
Okay, what about instances where, and I'm addressing another nuisance, where you have people that are camping in the same spot in a right-ofway for days at a time? We don't have an ordinance addressing that either at the moment, right? You can camp in a right-ofway as long as it's public space, correct? Just asking.
I think the city attorney's gonna have to answer that one.
We do have such an ordinance, we have a no camping on city property ordinance. Whether that's enforceable after recent Supreme, or Supreme Court decisions out of Oregon, I think it was, is another question, but we do have one.
I thought last year, when I inquired about that, we didn't have an ordinance on camping in right-ofways, that you could stay in right-ofways as long as, as long as you wanted.
That's never been the case, and that's never been what staff's answered.
I'm pretty sure police have had to be, have been turned away, because they couldn't do anything about a person in the right-ofway. I've had conversations with, actually, with Chief Oaks about that.
Well, we do...
Where they had to leave a situation, because they couldn't do anything about a person in a public place.
We do have questions about the enforceability of it, but...
Okay, thank you.
To your knowledge, Chief, has there been a question that you guys have responded to a call about people camping in the right-ofway, and we haven't responded? I know there's been stuff on private property, and where there had been permission provided to those individuals, but do you know, are you recalling anything for public right-ofway?
I mean, specifically, I can tell you we've had people camping on the side of the road, is that what we're talking about?
No, that's what I'm talking about. You guys, you guys have addressed it, you've gone out, and there's been several occasions. I'm just wondering, because what I'm saying is, I would like to deal with all these public nuisances in the same way, because I feel this is a much more broad nuisance that can be used in, in a, in a, in a much more malicious way, than actually having someone or someone physically in front of your property. That's what I'm saying, is so when we are, when we go to address these in the future, I would ask you the same consideration to those nuisances. That's what I'm saying. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you, guys.
All right, you're welcome. Okay, we have a motion, second. Any other discussion? No? All right, let's start voting, please. Okay, Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you. Up next, we have committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I have two. I went to the lead policy committee earlier this week. Lead has expanded to Caneos County, they are working on getting that set up and organized, very exciting stuff, they're doing some really neat things. The new person from the DA's office is doing a great job providing data, and that's sparking conversations among the team. We heard a lot of similar updates when they came to talk to us, but I do think that they're doing some really, really great things with their clientele, and continuing to get noted, you know, noticed from all over the country in doing those things. And then last night was the homeless coalition, those minutes were attached to our meeting today. I do feel like we are moving forward in a really neat way, very strategic, very intentional about the, like, the information we're going to get, how we're going to share the resources that we have in order to get information related to our homelessness issue, and then figuring out what those next steps are after we get some data. We did also have an emergency shelter meeting, like, for this winter, and there were some really good ideas, and there will be information passed out to people who are currently the unsheltered homeless, with it being this cold, because many people, there's a huge risk of them dying, or getting very sick. And so we, they will have access to some resources, people are working with La Puente to get that figured out, but the group really is coming together to manage an immediate need, and I think that, that immediate need has been taken, like, is not taken care of, but is, there's a plan around it. And then the committee, as a large committee, is really looking out forward and being strategic with what they have going on.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Hensley?
So I went to the Tree Board, and it is a very vibrant group, and has great ideas, and it's pretty exciting, actually. And so the energy's awesome, so things such as, we're gonna, they're going to pick out a day that will be for this year for the Tree City USA Arbor Day, and they're working on grants, and actually, so much exciting stuff, we're gonna have an extra meeting. And so we're gonna do a meeting in January, so you better all watch out and hear some exciting stuff that'll come out of that meeting.
And I went to the SLV DRG COG Board Meeting this week, and they had a Christmas holiday celebration, and also the executive director laid out some of the goals for the upcoming year. And it looks like they're moving forward with some of the things that they have in place, and making sure that they try to disperse funding for businesses and communities like ours, so that those doors can stay open, and they can grow and expand those businesses as well.
Okay. All righty. Up next, we have, we don't have any more committee reports, we have staff announcements.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
So we did touch on the refinancing of the bonds in our 2019 budget amendment, but I wanted to share with you, it was a very successful process. One of the professionals working on this, the standard to know if you should go through this process or not, because there's some cost associated with it and a lot of work, is if you, if you can see a savings of around 3%, and we were almost at 10%. So he said that's pretty much unheard of, to get something like that from a refinancing perspective. And so it's a very, very positive impact to the city. I wanna again thank Eric and Judy, the amount of documents, Mayor, when you were signing that packet, all of that had to be read over and over and over again, and it was, it was a lot of work and attention to detail, and so I wanna thank Eric and Judy for that. Also, I know every time we look at financing, council's very focused on the opportunity for local banks to participate, and so I wanna just thank our local banks who did, because they bought about one-third of the offering, so it was very significant and appreciated, and so that was great to see them participate in that process. And then lastly, I just wanna thank staff. Thank goodness for holiday decorations, they got it all out before we started having these temperatures like we're seeing this week, but they still did all of that, celebration of lights, all of those types of things. We've talked about some changes for next year, but I just wanna thank staff for that. And then also, we've had snow, which means we've had staff on different hours out there plowing and doing some things like that, too. And so I just wanna thank everyone who's been out in the elements and making the season that we're celebrating what it is.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Heather. Okay. So now, we're going to have council comments. I'll start, Counselor Carson, and then Hensley, then Grego.
As Christmas comes, you know, closer, you, you think more about the people that are less fortunate in our community, and we shouldn't just think about it during the holidays, you know, but we do tend to more. And Counselor Daniels and I, on the, being part of this homeless coalition and the entire city council spearheading this is a huge deal. It's, it's important that we get, that we're being proactive, in a, you know, somewhat reactive in a sense, but we're being proactive for the bigger problem. And I just want to commend you guys on the work you guys have done, the pushing forward of this committee. Counselor Daniels, on the emergency shelter committee, it's pretty scary out there, you know, we have people really suffering out there, you know, it's super, it's wickedly cold. And so I just wanna thank you guys for being, you know, being a part of that, and helping this, try to mitigate this situation, make it better, and make our community a leader in doing so, because I think we're poised to do so. And so I really wanted to convey my appreciation to you guys. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas to everybody, staff, to city. Thank you, guys, for letting us be part of this team, and being a great staff, and appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. Counselor Hensley, then Counselor Grego.
So Heather kinda stole my thunder a little, which, no, it was good, because I really was thinking about even taking it a step further.
was thinking about, even taking it a step further, is how, I think almost every person on staff has something they're doing extra, or something that adds to the enjoyment of the holidays for our citizens. And so, I was already thinking about, yes, all of the decorations, and, but even such things as when the trash day gets moved, and so, when we have a cancellation, then they have to work extra on the trash day. Obviously, all of the different, so definitely the plowing, but of the snow and things like that, but even the events, how the police have to do different things, the fire department, Public Works, all of the extra things they have to do, and then even like the library, so, such as when it is getting colder like this, and that idea, I'm sure there's more people going into the library. And so, I just think every single person has something added they're doing to help make our community, or our city, that much better. So, I actually wanted to also thank staff, every single one, because I do think everyone does make that difference, all the way to the ice skating rink, to everything that's going on. And so, I just wanted to pass that on, and to also wish everybody, everybody here on council, but also staff, very Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor Grego, then Counselor Brawls.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank my second family, council and staff, for the flowers you sent for me. Now that my sister passed, it meant a lot to me, and I've been here a long time, and when your family gets together, I, I really appreciate that, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. Counselor Brawls, and then Counselor Daniel.
Yeah, I want to wish everyone Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. But I want to talk about, I, an article in the paper caught my eye, and it was, it was deal with Oracle's annual convention in San Francisco. They're moving it to Las Vegas, and the reason they're moving to Las Vegas is because of skyrocketing prices and poor street conditions in the city. And that's going to cost San Francisco sixty-four million dollars. So, I was going to say that those items have an impact on economic development, and I, and I appreciate our city, really relatively looking, the city is up to date, clean, we're improving our streets, and, you know, and down the road, I think you'll see an economic impact by us doing that. I just wanted to bring that up, and tell everybody, staff particularly in Public Works, great job for keeping the city in the condition it's in. And also, the last snow, I think, did a great job taking off the snow off the streets. So, I just wanted to point that out, and again, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Counselor Brawls. Counselor Daniel, and then Counselor Vehoe.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say I was very excited that we appointed two people to boards tonight, so, during the consent agenda, so I'm very excited that we're getting people back on the boards. I did have a concern come up from a community member regarding the new LED lights. They feel like they are not as bright, like, that the streets between the lights actually feel darker, and they felt a little scared, and so, I didn't know if that was, if anybody else had received that feedback, if there's a way to check that. I know, like, in the stream, it's brighter, but they were more concerned about a lack of diffusing of the light. And so, I thought I would just bring that to, to our attention. And I've, I've kind of checked, I'm not a, I'm not super, I wasn't super observant before, so I don't want to say I could tell a difference, but I did go out and look, and it is dark in between them, but I think it would have been dark before, so, but there was a concern brought to me for that. I really wanted to say, I, I mean, everybody has said it, but our staff team is just amazing. I mean, Deacon saving money on the cemetery thing, that, all of the staff, all of the hard work you guys have been putting in to make sure that our end of the year is great. I just want to say thank you to our council team as well for wearing their fun sweaters and the really warm outfit that Counselor Carson had on. Really appreciate us being able to have fun up here, that's something that's really important to me. And I just wanted to say happy holidays to our entire community. I think a lot of people get to celebrate things in very different ways, and maybe they're far from home, or maybe they're, this is their home that they've had forever, but I really just, I hope people get to relax and enjoy their families during this time of year, and that it's relaxing for them.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Vehoe?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to quick bring up a, I got an email from Don Thompson with the H-PAC. I probably should have brought this up a little while ago, but, and you might have a little more information, but there's a proposed bill of sale, transfer of ownership of the Valhagen clock to the city. Can you talk about that, Heather?
So, we've been trying to help our historical preservation understand the format of how they need to work, and so, I've been encouraging Don to be working with Deacon, who is their staff liaison, and Deacon's been working with Eric in regards to doing just, so we can take ownership of the clock. I don't think it's going to require, there's no exchange of money, so it probably won't require council action, so, but Don is, you know, he's just got a lot of passion and energy, and, but, so I'm not sure, there's really, at this point, not a council item.
Sounds, and then, just one more thing is, Merry Christmas to everybody, and I'm sure you all are aware of what's going on at the national level. I just wish they would see what we do, and what staffs do across the country, city councils and staffs, and how we just get things done, and not worry about, about partisan politics, so.
Mayor, is it possible, I forgot something under staff update.
Oh, sure, help yourself, Heather.
Because we, in staff, I mean, we call it an oo-oo.
Oo-oo.
Can I do an oo-oo?
Okay, oo-oo, oo-oo, let's give her an oo-oo, everybody.
There are actually a few events that I really want to make sure that you guys are aware of. This Friday is the dedication of Wake the Bear, and it's set for six PM here, and it's exciting because it was a mother-daughter duo, and it was set for this date because the daughter will be back in town at this time. And so, the more people we can have, it's sometimes hard to get people on a Friday night, so the more people we can have, I know it'll be a really big deal, and they're going to share what their inspiration was, and I guess what they've named the bear, which I don't even know, so I guess it's a secret. And then, Saturday night is the Parade of Lights, I think most of you guys were aware of that, but since the next meeting would have fallen on New Year's, we won't really see you until the fifteenth, but you guys do show up for interviews on January eighth, and so, we'll send out reminders, but there's just some differences in your schedule coming up, not your regular kind of stuff, so, wanted to make sure you're aware of it.
What time is the wait?
Six PM.
Okay, I have a few comments I would like to add to. It's really a heart-woman feeling to see council and the entire staff really have an attitude of gratitude today and throughout the year, so, thank you all for that. Sorry, Counselor Grego, for the loss of your sister, and the whole council and staff, your family are in all of our thoughts and in our hearts, and if you need anything, you can count on us. You're welcome. I also would like to thank the city staff's snow removal team. I mean, it picked, the day that it snowed was Thanksgiving Day, so they had to leave away from their families, that was the first time, I believe, the snow, and then, the next time was this weekend, when they're off, and they have to come in and do the snow removal. But the safety for the, the people in our community means a lot, and I had so many people that just have come up to me in the past week, just being thankful for the snow removal, so please let that team know that the work that they're doing is very appreciated.
It's never eight to five. I mean, it's never eight to five on snow.
Never, it's like on the most challenging days, or when they're supposed to be at home with their families. Okay, the other thing I would like to do is I thank council and staff for wearing your festive attire. That shows camaraderie, and that's great when we can have that camaraderie right there, and, and to see everyone dressed up like that really brings joy to my heart, so thank you all. All right. The next thing, I would like to thank the city staff for, and the city clerk, and her staff as well, the city clerk and her staff decorated, I believe, this, this room right here, and it looks beautiful. And then, when you go down the different streets throughout our community, to see the lighting that staff has put into that, I, I think it looks very beautiful. I drove down, all the way down State Street to the airport, just to see all the pretty lights the other day. Wonderful, and so, keep up the great work there. The other thing I would like to do is invite everyone to come out, like Heather mentioned in her oo-oo a few minutes ago, to the Parade of Lights this Saturday, as well as to, to the Wake the Bear on Friday, that would be greatly appreciated. This year, council, this year, staff, we have had a phenomenal, successful year in the city of Alamosa, and we would not have been successful if it wasn't for the hard work and dedication of everyone up here. And to get to a pass, that was what I call an early Christmas present, and I'm really thankful for the community who supported that as well. And then, finally, in closing, I would like to wish everyone and your families a Merry Christmas, and I hope you all have a super fantastic New Year. Thank you very much. If we have no further discussion, the last meeting of 2019 is adjourned. Thank you.